Meeting of the year. All right. The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. I'll rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
There.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
All right. And the first item on the agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I don't recognize you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, is that, is that how it works? All right. Robert Cronwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. I just wanted to say I had the, I wouldn't call it pleasure, but the experience of coming down to municipal court to contest a parking ticket for two and a half hours this last Thursday. And I know what you're all thinking, Rob's going to complain about the court, but actually just the opposite. I wanted to commend how Judge Lipscomb handled the court that evening. He was personable, engaging, empathetic, took the time to explain the situation to everybody individually, gave them the chance to speak, helped them work through and gave them the direction to solve any other administrative problems they were having with their issues. And yet was still clear with everyone that there would be consequences if they didn't meet their objectives or make progress on their goals. And I gotta say, it was, it was nice to see. And I, and I just wanted to bring it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Wonderful news. All right. Next, on the consent agenda, there are four items. The adoption of the minutes for our last meeting, approval of payment two to Always Corporation for work completed this year on the Crestwood drainage program, approval of accounts payable and a denial of a claim. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
Move by Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmelsling. Any discussion? Okay, we'll consider the consent agenda approved without objection. Hearing no objections, we'll move on to new business. First item tonight is review and possible action on the appointment of election inspectors, and I will turn it over to the clerk.
Every odd numbered year where required by statute to approve the list of election inspectors. So this is that year. It's for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. It's the chiefs, the inspectors and the special voting deputies.
Thank you. And this, there's a lot of election inspectors. I know we usually only use about what thirty-five to forty? Is this a pool you'll pull from, or is this everyone that's you're expecting to be at every election?
We actually use more than that. We use probably about fifty to sixty. So there's about ninety-five on this list. And that's down from the hundred and fifty that we had before. So we've eliminated the people who were unresponsive or didn't follow through with the application process or were somewhere missing some kind of stuff, or just had resigned or retired because they no longer wish to work. So I would say in a presidential year, we'll probably use a good bulk of these people and we'll still take applications from people. So if people wish to work, we won't turn them down at this point. This is just, we're required to do this. So.
Okay, thanks. Questions from any council?
Yes, Alderwoman Shaw.
To understand the qualifications, each of the individuals have to live in Glendale, am I correct?
No, that is not correct. They have to be a Milwaukee County resident.
Okay.
They have to be a US citizen. They cannot have any unpardon felonies. Basically, they can't be on paper. And they have to be at least sixteen years of age. If they are still in high school and they have less than a three-point-oh grade point, they need permission from their parent and their principal. Yes.
Any other questions?
And the reason, in case anyone's wondering, there are five chiefs and only three sites. We had one chief move to New York. So we are replacing him. We have another chief who participates leaving, so we're training someone to replace her. And then we're training someone to be an alternate because we have never had an alternate, which is silly.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Can we get a motion then to approve the appointment of the election inspectors, chief inspector and special voting deputies for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five elections, please?
I'll move.
Thank you. Move Alderman Bailey. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Bukovic. Any discussion? Halt is in favor of approving. I.
I.
Oppose, no?
One abstain because I'm on the list.
Okay, one abstention then. Yeah. All right. Next item, item four B, review and possible action on the adoption of a multi-year agreement with Accurate for assessment services. And I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So the city has a five-year contract with Accurate Assessment Services that will expire in twenty twenty-three. This contract included one fuller reassessment, or as it's called in the agreement, a interim market update, and that that was commenced in the first year of the agreement. So it's been approximately five years since the city has had a full market reevaluation of our property. Because this contract was expiring, the city of Glendale with the village of Brown Deer issued an RFP for these services. We received two RFP proposals back, interviewed both companies. One was accurate and the other one was affiliated. After the interview, reviewing the company's proposals, the cost, staff is recommending a five-year agreement with Accurate assessment services at an annual cost of sixty thousand dollars that will not increase in any of the five years. And that includes a full market reevaluation every other year starting in twenty twenty-four. So that is two more than what was received in the last agreement that we had or the current agreement with Accurate. The last agreement or the current agreement that we're on was an annual cost of fifty-four thousand dollars. So it's about a six thousand dollar increase in today's costs for additional services in this agreement.
And could you refresh our memory? Where are we supposed to be in terms of assessed value to actual fair market value? What's the range the state's looking for or best practices would be looking for?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Bear, but I believe the minimum is eighty percent with the best practice as close to a hundred as possible. And I believe we are in the seventy percent range right now.
Yeah, and you have to be within ten percent.
Excellent.
And you also have, you're technically supposed to be within ten percent of every, every so many years. I think it's, it's three. It was five, and I think they've changed it to three. But at any rate, to a certain extent, it doesn't, I mean, as long as everybody is around the same, you know, the, the, because the, you know, the amount that you're going to assess, the levy is what it is. And so it's going to get divided. You know, regardless, you know, if every house is claimed to be worth a hundred dollars or a million dollars, you know, it's going to get divided, but, but it's best, best practices to be close because it's the most equitable distribution of the levy if you're close to a hundred percent. And so this particular one, it's, it's what they call, again, the interim market update is a full analysis to try to bring it up to a hundred percent, but it doesn't, it's significantly more expensive if you want to do a physical evaluation of every property. That's another level you can pay for, which is I don't, there's no reason to do that, but this is, this is really real ground if we go. It doesn't actually involve inspection of every home, but, but it, but it does take all the factors in and try to keep everybody equitable by putting them at a hundred percent.
Thank you. Mr. Hammerly, you have your hand raised. Were you wanting to speak to this issue? Because none of us here at the council have heard from you indicating you wanted to speak to this issue during this meeting.
No, I, I apologize. I, I was late. I did want to bring up a public comment, but I was past that point in time. That's why I'd raised my hand.
Okay, I tell you what, I will, I'll call on you again in a minute for public comment. Well.
Sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Okay. Anybody else in the council with any questions about this? All right. Well, we do have a recommendation then from the city administrator that we approve a five-year agreement with Accurate for assessment services that includes a full citywide reassessment in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight. So the first, third and fifth year with adjustments in the off years. So can we get a motion to approve that agreement, please?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Doherty, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Gelhard. Any further discussion? All right. Yes, Alderman Bukovic, would you please speak in your microphone?
This is one of the things that we, this is a shared service with Brown Deer.
No, we went out with an RFP with them and the intention of doing a shared service, but in the end, I believe they're going with a different, different vendor.
So we, it's our.
It's just our contract. Yep. All right. Any other questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the multi-year agreement with Accurate, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is four C, consideration of a request to schedule a public hearing for a general and specific development plan for a planned development district at forty-one sixty North Port Washington Road. And this is Mr. Fellows. This is the staff person who's going to speak on this one. So this is the, the property owned by Brian Monroe, who has joined us on the, on the Zoom. And this already been to the plan commission and already had a hearing there. So I'll go ahead and turn it back over, turn it over to Mr. Fellows.
Yes, you're correct, Mayor. This item has been to planning commission. They made a recommendation, a positive recommendation to city council. The next step is for city council to schedule a public hearing that would be in January. And staff's just asking you to direct staff to schedule that public hearing.
All right. This is the property that Meta House was going to, when to purchase. And we had already done the rezoning to a PD with Meta House. And so now we either have to zone it back or work out a specific development plan for Mr. Monroe. So he decided, he opted for the specific development plan route. So. All right. Can we get a motion then to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for as soon as possible? We'll leave it up to, rather than us pick a specific date, it'll most likely be the first meeting in January. But just in case there's an issue with the newspapers or whatever, directing staff to schedule it for as soon as possible. Move by Alderwoman Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Of all those in favor of directing staff to schedule a public hearing for the planned development, specific development plan for the planned development at forty-one sixty North Port Washington Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. All right. The next item is, the next item, item four D. I believe there was a request from this, from the, the individual who submitted this request has asked us if we would postpone this to a future meeting. I'm not, I don't want to pick a specific meeting. I'm not quite sure how much time it might take. So can we get a motion to postpone item four D to a future meeting? Okay, moved by Alderwoman Shaw is our second. Second by Alderwoman Bukovic. All those in favor of postponing item four D, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Okay, before we go through these two ordinances, if, if it's all right with the council, I'd like to recognize Mr. Hammerly. If you would tell us your public comment item, please.
Certainly. My name's Chris Hammerly.
Sorry, yeah, and for name and address, please, to start.
That's where I was going. Yep. So my name's Chris Hammerly. My address is sixty-eight eighty-one North Ironwood Lane in Glendale. Back in October, I approached the council with a request to deploy no engine braking zone signs around the construction areas. And I just wanted to see where we stood with that.
I know that request went into the state, folks, and I don't know. And Charlie's not here because he would probably be the one who could tell us where the DOT is on that. But Carl, do you know?
Um, I don't know exactly where we stand on this. The, the issue was is the, the fact that the city can't regulate what happens on, on the highway of engine braking on the highway on Geniclay Road certainly can. So I need to check with Mr. Emmig to see where we stand on that. He did have some communication on that with the Wistat folks though.
Yeah, because we do talk daily. Charlie talks daily with the folks in the DOT about all the construction projects. So. Yeah, and I know he was going to bring it up with them. Mr. Hammerly, we, we do have, well, we have your name and address, but if you wanted to send an email to, I don't know if you have emails for staff, but a number of us are on the website. Send an email to us and we can follow up with you once we know your email address. We'll let you know where things are.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move now to item four E, which is an ordinance adopting regulations for responsible bidders. So we adopted a process a few years ago for responsible bidder. And we've now had several years of tweaking that process to see how it works. So Carl and Mustafa and I had, and Charlie had a meeting a couple of, probably six weeks ago, no, four weeks ago. And we sat down and we kind of went through where it was. And now that we have a number of years of it, the idea was to take and now write an ordinance and codify the process. So, because we wanted to try it for a couple of years to see how it worked. And so we have, and so I don't know if you want to add any more to that, Carl?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Yeah, the, essentially the ordinance really mimics the procedures and manuals for responsible bidders that we had in place. There's a couple of differences. One of those differences is that it puts in a requirement for any contract, public works contract with the city in excess of one million dollars. The contractor is required to have a apprenticeship program. And then the second part of this is our, our contract engineers would spend a significant amount of time verifying financial and other information that they weren't necessarily qualified to do. So we simply require that the contractor sign a sworn affidavit that they are providing the correct information when submitting this stuff to try to simplify the process.
And the, the apprenticeship program comes to, if we spend our ARPA money, or when, when we spend our ARPA money, when we spend the earmark from the Congresswoman Morgot is for Silver Spring, the federal government actually requires on large projects that there be an apprenticeship program, a Department of Labor registered apprenticeship program. So putting that in here covers us. It's already done. We won't have people bidding for something they're not qualified to bid for. So. Yeah, oh yeah, exactly. All right. Can we get a motion then to adopt the ordinance for responsible bidder as presented by staff?
I'll move.
Move by Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Any discussion?
One question.
So sorry, Alderman Bailey then, or sorry, Alderman Doherty, then Alderwoman Bukovic and then Alderman Schmelsling.
Even though we're having them certify they're not lying in the deal. And we had people doing too much or not qualified for work. We still should be doing some oversight, right?
Yeah, exactly. The, the one thing that we will definitely be doing is ensuring that they are responsible bidder that has performed similar projects in the past by checking references with other municipal and other local governments.
Thank you.
And then if there's things that we find, we would definitely verify those true or false.
Alderman Bukovic? Okay, Alderman Schmelsling.
Yeah, I was just curious, over the last couple of years, have we seen a reduction in the number of qualified bidders that are bidding on projects? Because I know it's been rough with materials and supplies with over COVID, supply chain issues. Like, I, I'm just curious if we're seeing that, what else can we be doing in this to kind of make it easier for people to at least know about our, our projects and such?
So the, the change here is one that will impact the city more on the large projects over a million dollars. In the last year and a half since I've worked here, we haven't really had those because most of it's been focused on the I forty-three construction. It's all been state bid. In terms of the contracts that are in a lower price, I, we've, we've always had successful low bids on contracts that have come in at or near the price. So I have not seen any problem with us finding contractors. The problem that we've seen is purchasing vehicles has been the biggest part and the most expensive increase.
Alderman Bukovic?
Just as we are requiring people to pre-register, I really want to make sure that we get our pre-registering process out there. So not just put in a, make sure that all these, these different entities know that we have a pre-registration process. And I'm talking about the Women's Building Coalition, the Black Construction Worker, whatever that union is called or that association. Making sure that you send this out to diverse groups so they know that they have to pre-register. Because it ends up being that, yes, you have to pre-register, but if we are not getting it to everyone so they can pre-register or they can be able to submit a bid, it defeats the purpose of our, our equity or inclusion policies that we try to practice.
Work with Charlie and Mustafa to make sure that it gets spread far and wide.
Yes, that is correct. I have it right now. We'll discuss that tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Alderman Gelhard?
Have you ever had a situation where we've required someone bidding on a contract to have a registered apprenticeship program, Carl?
Excuse me, I didn't catch the first part of that.
The answer is no, we haven't before. It's, it's a new qualification we put in because of ARPA funds and the earmark. And we may have a potential to get some big state grants, and all of those actually do require Department of Labor certified apprenticeship programs.
Number eight in the ordinance was there in the past where it says contract, the contractor participates in a, in a apprenticeship program. It has to be a class A apprenticeship program. That was in our current program. The addition is the one that states if a contract is over one million dollars and it's a city project number nine, they must have a one million, they must have a apprenticeship program.
Although it seems like it, there's some language that makes it discretionary on your behalf. And, and if determined to be appropriate in the discretion of the city administrator at the time, a request for bids or requests for quotes is issued. So it sounds like there's some room there that you might waive that. Isn't that what that says?
That is correct. Yeah. So the city administrator would have the ability, and I'm trying to think of a contract. Obviously, if we, you know, redesign our, our public works facility, rebuild a road, we're going to require an apprenticeship program. I'm trying to think of a, a program or a construction that necessarily wouldn't have an apprenticeship program. Probably if we do a million and a half dollar road resurfacing program, those are typically jobs that wouldn't have an apprenticeship program for laying asphalt and stuff like that.
Sidewalk work that we had done last summer, where we had a number of sidewalk repairs around the city. That, they didn't have an apprenticeship program, if I'm not mistaken.
We didn't require it, and we didn't require documentation, whether they had it or not. We, we have no idea.
Yeah. It also was like, I think it was about three hundred thousand dollar project total, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, Alderman Bukovic?
With that project, I believe they, they may not have apprentice, but they, I think they had interns. Because some of the stuff, the interns were working with them on projects. So. But my other question is, so there is some discretion unless it's required by law, like federal law or state law, whatever it is, they have to have it, but if they don't, it won't stop this particular happens if they don't have an apprentice program, but they never bid on state or federal things. And then this is one of our, I just want to make sure that we are not stuck when we have a good low bid and, you know, it's a good quality place, but yet they don't have an apprentice program. So why? And they, I just don't know.
Yeah, under this ordinance, if they bid on and are awarded a contract in excess of one million dollars, they will generally be required to have an apprenticeship program.
It's only.
There are some exceptions, like I said, that could be made by the city administrator. And if those exceptions did appear nine times or ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I'm going to take it to the common council to confirm that we should initiate that exception.
Any other questions? All right, we do have the motion in a second. There's no other discussion. I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance that creates regulations for responsible bidders, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. The next item for F is an ordinance adopting regulations for purchasing contracts and change orders. Now I'll turn it back over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. While we were preparing the ordinance for the responsible bidders, the purchasing policy somewhat similar to that. So took the opportunity to try to eliminate any duplicates between the two policies by drafting an ordinance for the purchasing policy. In two thousand seventeen, the common council adopted what was called the city purchasing manual. This would essentially put it in the code, just like we put the responsible bidders item in there. This includes a lot of the same language in terms of requirements for three competitive bids for projects between three thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the requirements to follow the state law for bidding requirements, which is anything in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars for construction contracts. It would also allow the city administrator continue to purchase and execute contracts up to the budgeted amount, but in excess of two thousand dollars or two percent, whichever is greater. That's a discretionary item that the common council could definitely talk about. And then also, if there are items that are in excess of the budget, we typically do not purchase over the budgeted amount. This places an exception in there for items that are required for us to continue operation like fuel, oil, electricity, natural gas, things that we need to keep the lights on here in the city all or keep the squad cars running. And then we also put in contract change order and engineering change order requirements. I did not see that in the previous policy. The contract change order policy would essentially allow the administrator to execute contract change orders in excess of, or up to ten thousand dollars. If they are more than that, then it requires approval of the mayor and the senior common council member and then notification of the whole common council in twenty-four hours and then ratification at the next meeting. The same procedures would be required for engineering change orders, but my limitation on that would be five thousand dollars. And then there's also the same policies in there without a dollar limit for an emergency. Say we had a large snow and ice control operation necessary to get a bunch of more trucks up, more trucks out there than those procedures would, would, would be put in place.
This language is pretty consistent with what other municipalities have, as well as what other regional entities have. For example, I serve on the MMSD Commission, and the executive director of MMSD has the ability to approve change orders up to a certain percentage of a contract or to a certain amount. And then anything above and beyond that has to go back to the commission. Essentially, we're establishing the same sort of delegated authority. At the, with the moment, what we have is the city administrator is allowed to make purchases or approval of things up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is now actually creates a whole bunch of categories and creates better guidelines for, for oversight there. So it isn't just twenty-five thousand dollars is a blanket amount, but it actually is percentages of contracts up to certain amounts or thresholds, which is pretty consistent with what other municipalities are doing as well. So. All right. Are there any questions for the city administrator? Yes, Alderwoman Shaw?
Just from what the city administrator worked with commenting on, just from his verbal description. When you talked about change orders and where you would need to seek the mayor or the senior alderman, are you actually meaning the president of the council?
Correct. It's the, it's the council president. I was speaking quickly and I was blanking on the term, so I had to come up with what was on my mind. So thank you.
But I just wanted to make sure because after all, you are being recorded and they can't see what you're right, reading from.
Well, that and you're the senior, you're the senior person here, right?
If you want us to amend that to the senior council member, we can do that in here. But yes, it is the council president. That's in the ordinance.
All right. Do we get a motion on this yet? Okay, thank you. Move Alderman Schmelsling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Any discussion? Yeah, Alderman Schmelsling, go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you for doing this because I've watched sometimes some change orders come through and I'm scratching my head on it after the fact. So it's just nice to get ahead of it. So thank you. And then even if it's approved and we just get a heads up, it's helpful. So.
Thank you. And we also, I forgot to mention this, that we establish procedures for the only reason we would bring a change order, which means it has to generally wouldn't be cheaper if you bid it somewhere else. It has to be cheaper by doing it as part of the contract and time matters and all that sort of stuff.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Next item is item four G. We have a review and possible action on an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point one point twenty-five, keeping of domestic animals and fowls, amending the ordinance for clarification. Mr. Fellows is here, and I know this was actually brought up by Alderwoman Bukovic. So, or she asked to have it placed on the agenda.
So there's, there was some confusion or just some difficulty, I guess, particularly in some of our smaller neighborhoods or tighter neighborhoods with smaller lots about how the ordinance works. So the ordinance is written, says that the chicken coop has to be twenty-five feet from an adjoining residential structure, not from the property line. But then there was a little bit of question of what's a residential structure. So when you have a small lot that's maybe forty feet wide and let's say a hundred and twenty feet deep, often those homes have garages or other detached garages, those types of things. So we did a little bit of analysis down towards Glen, Glen, Glendale Avenue and some other areas where the lots are a little bit tighter. And to amend the ordinance, we, first, we were thinking we're going to have to change the twenty-five feet. And then what we realized was we could keep it at twenty-five feet, which is citywide, but we could. um, clarify and make sure that garages aren't actually considered the residential structure, because no one actually lives in the garage. Um, and so that's what we're putting before you, so that does allow for someone to put a chicken coop in their backyard, either um, right at the property line, or pretty close to a property line, or in the middle of the yard, that type of thing, because most of the cases that uh, the twenty-five feet would measure to like the neighbors, kind of particularly the neighbor, the rear would be like right to the middle, their backyard, so there's probably close to fifty feet or more, kind of same thing on the sides, you might be within the range of garages, but not um, um, not the actual homes, and then on the larger lots, it's not really an issue, because some of those lots are, you know, a hundred and fifty feet wide, or a hundred and twenty-five feet's no problem, so. And then we did add one little sentence about um, conversions. I don't think the ordinance really anticipated people wanting to convert their shed into a chicken coop. Um, and so there's been a few conversations with some applicants that have come in wanting to convert that, and exactly how that works and that kind of thing, and so um, we just basically put a sentence in there, it says if you're gonna convert an existing structure, it still needs to comply.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Dougherty?
Has there been any complaints, really? Uh, the chicken thing was pretty contentious back
Complaint in the last two years is somebody um, had their eggs delivered, and they hatched them, and one of the eggs turned out to be a rooster. Um, and they kind of fell in love with the rooster, and we had to tell them they had to get rid of the rooster, and it was sort of a sad day for them, but otherwise, we haven't had any other complaints.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Get a motion then to adopt the ordinance as presented?
Moved.
Moved Alderman Dougherty, second of Alderman Vukovich, any discussion? Alderman Vukovich?
I really love this ordinance, so we can stop the discriminatory um, active uh, ordinances that allow my smaller lots not to have our chickens. Um, and I would like to correct Mr. um, Fellows. She just wanted to make sure that it was alive and raised properly, and that is why she kept it as long as she did.
But she fell in love with the rooster.
Yeah, I'm trying to cover for
All right. Any other discussion?
What about tree houses?
Houses?
I'm kidding, it's, it's not in our ordinances whatsoever.
I don't think we have a regulation for it, I do believe our neighbor to the east does have a regulation for um, tree houses. But I don't, we don't have anything.
Yes, but their tree houses are like little mini McMansions built
They are.
See that one on Bender?
I'm just thinking if I want to have chickens up in my treehouse someday, you know? Anyways, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no?
Oh.
Okay, uh, vote of five to one, the ordinance passes. Okay, the last item of new business is item four H, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point six, regulation of signs, billboards, and other advertising media, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fellows.
Uh, yes, uh, and before we get too into this, I just want to mention that um, it does set the at the recommendation is to grant a motion to approve, this is actually oh wait, actually, never mind, sorry, uh, it's a long night, I guess, I was thinking it was a chapter uh, in the zoning code, but it's not, so it actually is a simpler ordinance process. Um, so you saw this ordinance um, a number of months ago, there is great debate about expanding the area that billboards would be a lot, digital billboards would be allowed in the um, uh, community, staff heard back from um, all of you, um, and so basically the language with regard to expanding uh, the boundaries of digital billboards, um, both in the number of structures, the quantity of actual display boards, as well as the geographic areas was actually removed from that ordinance, so this ordinance does retain some cleanup items, but it also, as I mentioned, um, we do have a couple corporate uh, properties here um, in the city, and they had applied, um, one larger business applied for some campus directional signage. And our current directional signage says you can only have one, and it can only be four street, four square feet, and so when you get to a big campus, if you're trying to get to multiple buildings, that doesn't really work, and so we did keep that um, section in um, as originally drafted.
All right, is there any questions for members of the council? All right, can we get a motion then to adopt the ordinance as presented?
Moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second? Second of Alderman Vukovich. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no? Motion carries. Next, commission, committee, board, and staff reports. Uh, I will go first this time, the ICC met this morning, it was a pretty, this afternoon, it was a pretty mundane meeting, I mean, there wasn't really anything exciting on it's a simple discussions about stuff, but it was actually kind of a boring meeting, so um, short agenda too. Uh, tomorrow morning, the North Shore Fire Department meets at eight AM via Zoom, so that uh, that meeting, obviously anyone's welcome to attend. And Thursday night, we had the lighting of the menorah at Bay Shore, was very well attended. Um, and uh, I was there, as was the county executive, um, Alderman Vukovich was there, our um, two state representatives, Representative Reamer, who is, who is Jewish, and he's from the southwest side of Milwaukee. Um, uh, Representative Madison, who represents us, and then Alderman John, uh, Jonathan Brostoff from Milwaukee was there. I'm trying to think, I think it was one other person, and oh, County Supervisor Sheldon Wasserman, so. Yeah, I actually got to light one of the candles, which I thought was cool, it's kind of fun. All right, um, and just for, I guess, informational purposes, uh, we have never had decorations before, previous city administrators have never allowed them. And uh, Carl and I had a conversation probably a month or so ago, in which we were approached actually by someone who wanted to donate some decorations, and so what I've done is essentially say, anybody wants to donate anything, we don't care the religion, it's that time of year when there's fourteen religions that have a holiday this month, anybody who donates anything are welcome to to donate, and we'll put up the decorations, so we have a Christmas tree in the lobby, we have a menorah just out front that was um, donated. Um, the menorah will be here for eight days, and then it'll be gone, the Christmas tree will be here until probably sometime between Christmas and New Year's. But everything was donated, so no cost to the taxpayers, and anybody who has any holiday they'd like us to donate anything, well, happy to put up the decorations, so. Um, that way we're representing everybody. So that concludes my reports, and I will now go to number one.
One has nothing to say.
And number two?
Nothing to report tonight.
Three?
Think this evening.
Four?
Nothing this evening.
Five?
One quick thing, we should look into getting those flying drones like they had for the um, Bay Shore menorah lighting for the Fourth of July or something, that was pretty cool. So anyways, just a thought. Thank you, nothing else.
For six?
A report.
All right, city clerk?
Nothing.
All right, chief? All right, uh, city attorney?
I'll be reserving my remarks for the closed session.
All right, and city administrator?
I just have one quick item, I know we're all excited, it's property tax season, um. So, um, we are in a new um, uh, system mandated by Milwaukee County, which has taken uh, Glendale and other municipalities a long time to get used to and um, familiar with, particularly loading up new assessment rolls. Uh, we have finalized our assessment rolls, should be loaded up into the land NAF system tomorrow. Um, hopefully Wednesday or Thursday, people will be able to go online, go to glendaleWI.org, and you can pay your uh, property taxes online. Um, after that, the pa- tax bills will be mailed out, um, hopefully people will get them later this week or early next week, so. Um, there's no early bird discount for paying them, but uh, they will be released soon.
But if you pay it before December thirty-first, and you itemize your taxes, you can count it this year, as opposed to counting it next year.
I'm not a tax professional, but that's what I understand.
Yeah. Um, and uh, we, we will be in compliance, the state statute, I believe, is December fifteenth, they must be postmarked by December fifteenth, correct?
That is correct, we will be in compliance with the December fifteenth deadline, there might be some municipalities that are not in compliance because of the new complicated system. What we may not have in place is a credit card reader, that if you come into the city hall, we will have to manually enter your credit card, so we will, at least for the first couple of weeks, encourage everybody as much as possible to pay online. The credit card reader was not on Amazon Prime, so it does take a little longer to come.
And get two-day shipping, huh?
Correct.
All right, um, any questions for any of the staff, or any of us on any of our reports? All right, so that concludes all of our new, all of our business items for tonight, we do have a closed session. The closed session uh, is noticed for us to discuss the city administrator's annual performance review, as well as to discuss a legal matter that is currently involving the city. When we come out of closed session, there will be no action on items, there will be, we're not gonna be asked to make any motions or vote on anything, so when we reconvene in open session, it'll be just for uh, a motion to adjourn the meeting, so. Could I get a motion to convene in closed session as indicated on the agenda, please?
Don't move.
Uh, moved by Alderman Shaw, second of Alderman Dougherty, all those in favor of convening in closed section, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries, we are now in closed session. I'll give the clerk time to get things shut down before we move forward. All right, we had a vote by uh, Bailey, seconded by Schmelsing um, to reconvene in open session, it is seven fifty-nine PM. Um, I would now ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Vukovich, seconded by Gelhard to adjourn, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
O's and adjourned, it's still seven fifty-nine PM.